September twenty first, two thousand and twenty, Little Falls City Council's special work session ordered. You have a call. Public four is temporarily suspended while we're COVID rules and operating through Zoom. Bill discussion. Does anyone have any questions regarding the bills? No one has any questions about the bill's consent agenda item discussion? No one has any questions regarding the consent agenda items? We wanted the council informational on the items. And item A will be the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities' presentation. Scott McMahon. Welcome, Scott.
Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, at least virtually. I'm always disappointed that I don't have the chance to talk a little call. It's one of my favorite cities. But hopefully, the next time I have this opportunity, we, you guys, we get the live show going anyway. So John, am I good to share my screen here?
You should be, yep.
All right. Let's see if it's gonna work here. All right. Should I see that okay?
Yep.
Perfect. Well, I wanted to give you all an update as to what has happened at the legislature, what hasn't happened in the legislature, what may happen in the legislature, and where things may go in two thousand and twenty-one. As you all know, we have had an interesting legislative year. We started it back in February with the normal legislative session. And then in March, we went into the COVID legislative session. And then in June, July, August, and September, we have had four special sessions, with another one to come up in October, and then November, and then December. And then in January, we'll come back for the two thousand and twenty-one session. So I'll just kind of wander through all of the CGMC stuff over that period of time and take any questions that you all may have. So looking at, you know, not that you all need this, but just to remind you what the CGMC is. We are the coalition of under two cities across the state that work on, frankly, whatever the board wants us to. Obviously, they're primary. Then we work on LGA property tax issues. But we do economic development, extension land use transportation, environmental energy, and labor and employment. Looking at what happened last session. You know, we wandered in in February with expectation that it was gonna be a short session, that we're gonna be dealing with a one point five billion dollar bond surplus, and that the goal of the session would focus on getting a bonding bill done. In reality, what we experienced was come the middle of March, no in-person legislative meetings, four special sessions, a surplus of one point five billion. It now become a deficit of two point four billion, probably the biggest swing that Minnesota's ever experienced in such a short period of time. We have had a battle over course of mental health of the federal aid. We've experienced that one arrest and police reforming, police reform taking center state to the capital. We have seen metal lines over the governor walls and executive powers. And we still have a bonding bill that's tied up with a whole lot of uncertainty. So as you recall, the last time that we saw you all in person was back in the middle of March with what we're calling our last normal day, when we had the CGMC Legislative Action Day. It was that weekend in which the governor's orders started going to effect. And that next week was when pretty much everything in the state shut down. So our goals pre-shutdown and our goals after shutdown in many ways look the same, but we had some differences come forward. Going into the session, we were looking for a bonding bill of at least one point five billion dollars based off of the infrastructure needs and what we were looking for in Greater Minnesota. We were also advancing a LGA bill that would bring inflation and population growth into the program. We wanted to build on our two thousand and nineteen childcare progress. And then we wanted to advance our strategy around PFAS chemicals. After COVID, we obviously still need a large bonding bill. It's one of the best ways to get our economy back up and moving. We spent a considerable amount of time, continue to spend a considerable amount of time working on the CARES Act and getting those dollars out to the local governments and making sure that that is done in a fair way. We know that we have a continued and now exacerbated childcare crisis. We work closely with D in the legislature to get support out for small businesses and for Main Street businesses. And then obviously, we are working to make sure that LGA is not part of the solution regarding the state's budget crisis. We also decided we needed to post my first order to help you all navigate the pandemic. So we created a website to provide resources for you all. We hosted more labor and employment webinars to help you figure out how to deal with any employment and labor issues that may pop up. We sent a number of information and emails on topics from personal issues, workplace safety, and so on and so forth. We hosted a webinar on the state budget. We sent out a survey of all of you and your kind of remarks across the state to figure out what your top concerns are. We increased the production of our newsletter. And then we posted a Zoom with Governor Walz, so that you all have direct access to answer your questions up directly. So looking at the CARES Act. As you all know, the CARES Act was a federal bill to send money to states for a number of different areas, including supporting local governments, as you all dealt with the outbreak of COVID nineteen. Looking at the timeline, Congress passed the bill in late March. In early April, it was determined that Minnesota would receive one point eight billion dollars. In April, we got very vague guidance from the feds as to how that money was supposed to be used, distributed, what it was able to be used for, and so on and so forth. April, May, as we wound up the regular session, we were involved in a deep, what became a total conversation around how those dollars should be distributed and under what formula we should be looking at it. Come June, we had a special session. We finally got an agreement at the legislature as to how the formula should be pulled together. The bill failed to pass because the governor expressed a lot of support in the formula that the legislature ultimately kind of negotiated. And then about a week later, the governor decided to unilaterally, under his executive orders, authorize the distribution of bonds as the legislature had negotiated. And so looking at, looking at those several proposals, we had very different proposals from the House and the Senate as to how those dollars should come out. As you can see on this graph, under the House proposal, Little Falls would receive about a half million dollars. Under the Senate proposal, you know, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. What came out as the final agreement was a proposal that was a little bit more favorable to cities and the needs that you all were facing. And so the check that should have come to Little Falls, if our analysis is correct, was about six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. If you have additional questions beyond what you've been able to get from us, there are great resources at Revenue, at the Treasury, and then at the League Minnesota Cities that agree to have a queue on the CARES Act as well. So looking at the bonding bill being our top priority going into the session, but also the real date, the bonding bill is a critical part of moving the state forward and getting our economy back up and running. We have been calling, continue to call for a bonding bill of at least one point five billion dollars to include two hundred million dollars for wastewater water infrastructure, twenty million dollars for BDPI program, the Business Development Public Infrastructure, twenty million dollars for childcare facilities grants, ten million dollars for public infrastructure to support housing, and two hundred million dollars for local roads and bridges. This was an important bill going into session, and it's even more of an important now that we're dealing with the economy again, that kind of realities that we have across all communities in this country. So looking at kind of where we have been on the bonding bill. Back in the fall, we announced our plan. We were one of the first groups to come on call for a really big bonding bill. In February, we held press conferences focused on the bill. In March, it was a primary focus on March eleventh, when you all were done with us for the day. In late March, we sent out a letter to the legislators calling it a mission critical bill. In early May, we participated with the Vex and Hikes Coalition on a press conference. In late May, a session wound up. We were, you know, having action alerts go out, letters going out to the media, and every daily COG training to go forward. Since then, we've had four special sessions that could have acted on the bonding bill. In June, we called the special session with the train wreck because they simply were not able to get their work done. There was one thing in addition to approving or acting on the governor's emergency order declaration. There was one thing they needed to do with the bonding bill, and they couldn't get that done. In July, they came back and again couldn't get the, couldn't get the bonding bill done. In August and September, we were actually recluded from acting on the bonding bill because in August, the state issued some previously approved bonds, which meant based off of banking standards, we couldn't adjust our balance sheet for thirty days up until that day and thirty days after that day. So during the August and September bonding or special sessions, the legislature could not act on the bonding bill. That thirty-day period wrapped up today. And so at any point now, the legislature could come back in a special session. Or in October, they come back and act on the governor's emergency orders and act on, and act on that bonding bill. We do know that conversations are moving forward. There continue to be a lot of politics wrapped around what special sessions can do and what needs to happen in order for the bonding bill to be acted upon. But we're not, we're not there yet. We're not quite at the agreement point. I think I hit on most of these points. But if they don't, if we don't act on the bonding bill during special sessions, it'll be something that comes forward then in January, when the legislature comes back to the regular session. So another big thing we were working on this session was the PFAS issue. And I hope you're okay if I don't attempt to pronounce the actual chemical terms there because I screw them up every time. But PFAS are pervasive forever chemicals that end up in our, in our water system. And we know that removal of PFAS from drinking water is extremely expensive. But we also know the removal from the wastewater is not technically feasible. And so we had a solution to try and deal with PFAS from the municipal source reduction initiative. We partnered with the League and on a three-pronged approach to identify main sources for PFAS in our wastewater system, to identify source reduction strategies, and educate wastewater professionals in public ways to prevent PFAS from entering the waste stream. We were seeking five hundred thousand dollars for this initiative this legislative session. And much like what happened with most everything this session, the COVID pandemic killed most funding bills, including this one. And so we are hoping that when we come back in two thousand and twenty-one, that this can be a top priority with action early on. But obviously, we're gonna be dealing with the very significant budget deficit next session. So everything's gonna be kind of up in the air for a while. Another big issue, and one that, as always, I appreciate the support of Little Falls and in particular, John R. Markers, he had this issue over the years, is childcare. Our priorities for this session were to get an additional ten million dollars for D for their childcare grants, and an additional four million dollars to the sixth initiative foundation for them to continue doing the intervention work that they've been doing. We were very pleased to see early in session that the House DFL announced that I've got one point four billion dollar surplus, that they were gonna commit five hundred million dollars of that to their early childhood initiatives, which included pretty much all of our childcare priorities. And then March happened, and COVID came along, and these initiatives came close reaching home. We did have some things happen in childcare world. In April, the state committed forty million dollars of the CARES money to create emergency fund for childcare providers. Just given the extreme volatility that they saw in the marketplace as families were pulling kids out of childcare facilities and needing to prop up that sector. We were pleased to see that fifty-three percent of those funds did go to providers in Greater Minnesota. Come then and May, there were a whole lot more things that happened in the childcare front. When we came back to the June special session, they did allocate eighty-five million dollars to increase funding for the state's childcare assistance program. This is our needs-based program. That eighty-five million dollars was all federal money. And so it wasn't a state appropriation, we were able to create some money to make that happen. So we're glad to see that occur. In July, the governor announced an additional sixty million dollars in emergency funds for childcare providers. And we're still waiting to see where those dollars went. But we anticipate that majority of those dollars as well will go to providers in Greater Minnesota. Looking out from here, we knew during this session we were short forty thousand childcare slots across Greater Minnesota. We know that that number is going to be worse. We know we have lost providers, both family care providers and centers. But we're waiting to see what the impact of COVID has been on industry. But we do know, or we anticipate that we'll be in a worse situation going into the two thousand and twenty-one session than we were going in the two thousand and twenty session. So looking ahead, what are we watching, what are we thinking about? So again, in February, we had a one point five billion dollar surplus. In May, we had a two point four billion dollar deficit. At that point, we had sent a letter to the governor and to the legislature urging them to make sure that LGA was paid on time and in full, just knowing how critical those resources are for the cities. In July, an updated revenue estimate came forward showing that we should be planning on a four point seven billion dollar deficit for the upcoming biennium, with anticipation in November that we will get an updated number and the formal budget forecast for the state. So when we think about a four point seven billion dollar budget deficit, we know that the state is going to have to cut spending. So there are a couple options they have. One is to come up with some sort of budget deficit deal during the upcoming special sessions. This would allow us to reduce spending during the current biennium, which will have an impact on the out years and soften the size of the deficit. We could have a deal on the budget come during the next legislative session that would deal with the upcoming biennium. Or as we all recall from, from a couple governors ago, we do have this unalotment topic. These are the things that the state will be using to figure out how to deal with whatever level of deficit that we end up experiencing. But again, our number one priority is always and will always be ensuring that LGA is paid on time and full going forward. So looking at Little Falls, as to what's going on in LGA. If our analysis is correct, your two thousand and twenty LGA should have been about two point seven two million dollars. And when we had the increase approved the previous session, there was an additional increase in the second year. And so your two thousand and twenty-one LGA should increase by about a sixty thousand dollars or so. Again, that's assuming that my analysis worked out the way that it should. So looking ahead, obviously, November, we have an election. This could shift the power dynamics. The governor obviously is not up for reelection at this point. But all two hundred line legislators are. The House and the Senate are both up for election. I don't anticipate seeing a change in the majority in the House, although we could see the size of the majority either shrink or grow. And then as far as the Senate, it's probably a coin toss right now as to which of the two caucuses controls the Senate going forward. There's a couple seat majority right now, and there are a handful of seats primarily in the metro for the Republicans that we're watching, and a couple Democratic seats in the Greater Minnesota that we're watching. So we'll go back to the membership after the election with our recap of what's happened. The pandemic will continue to impact the economy and the legislative process. At this point, the legislature is planning on not meeting in person this third session. And so we'll kind of see how we need to go about advocating in that, in that environment. Again, protecting LGA will be our top priority. We'll continue to have a strong push for the bonding bill. Hopefully, that's not a two thousand and twenty-one issue, that we get it done before then. But if it's not done, it will be a two thousand and twenty-one issue. But please know that our groundwork for a successful two thousand and twenty-one session has already begun. So a couple upcoming events to put on your radar. We have our Fall Conference coming up November ninth, twentieth. The board has recently decided that that needs to be a virtual conference. And so watch your inbox for details on that. We are planning on the Legislative Action Day on January twenty-seventh. We're still in the virtual world at that point. We'll figure out some way to facilitate a virtual action day in next setting. And then comes July twenty to the thirtieth. We hope that we're all in person in Red Wing for our summer conference. It's always a great event. Hooked up in the highlight Red Wing and all the debate going on, as well as I get a deep dive into a lot of the issues that you all care about. And the last, I just thank you, and those are the social media ways that you all can reach us. If you have any questions, we are active on Twitter, pushing things out as much as we can. And it's a great resource to kind of see what's going on in our world and what we hope your, our, what issues are a focal point for you as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
No one have any questions? I know that we need to say thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of cities like Little Falls. We appreciate your hard work and all the things that you draw attention to and that you help us out with. We appreciate that.
Oh, we appreciate the opportunity.
Do you want to have any questions?
Scott, can you, could you explain a little bit if unalotment is a possibility for us this fall? Like what, what that might mean?
You know, I don't think unalotment will be a tool that is used at this point. Again, just for the reminder, the governor has the ability to unilaterally cancel spending on anything that hasn't been spent yet. And so if you think back to when Governor Plente was governor and we were dealing with some budget shortfalls then, unalotment was a tool that he used considerably during his time. And so, you know, basically, anything that, that hasn't been spent yet, even though it's things that we plan on spending, are things that they could unalot. Obviously, we have real concerns about this with LGA. It was something that we experienced pretty significant unalotments from Governor Plente. LGA is obviously a significant budget area for the state. And so when, when a tool, well frankly, whether it's unalotment or if it's the legislature acting on budget considerations, it's going to be the big buckets that they look at. It's going to have to be K-12 spending, higher education spending, Health and Human Services spending, LGA, and the big ticket items. You know, when you have, you know, a childcare D program of ten million dollars, that doesn't get us anywhere cutting that spending to address the four point seven billion dollar budget deficits. So, you know, it's, it's one of the things we need to watch and pay attention to what's going on. But I anticipate that we'll probably see some level of budget trimming coming out of the current biennium. That that would be a, that would be negotiated action between the governor and the legislature. And then I think a considerable portion of next session will focus on, will focus on negotiating a budget that goes forward. I think given how much Governor Walz has been using to hit order and unilateral action to deal with the COVID response, a lot of things need to happen before he decides to use a unilateral method to deal with the life.
Do you, you did show that we have a certified amount, and I, and that is correct. I think your certified amount was correct for two thousand and twenty-one budget. But is there, is that potentially, if everything and everything comes on the docket to handle a budget shortfall for the next biennium budget, is that two thousand and twenty-one certified amount, is that in jeopardy for us? As well as any other city that receives a local government contribution?
I believe the answer is yes. Anything that has not been issued out at this point, it would be on the table. And again, that's why our number one priority right now is to make sure that, that LGA is protected. Obviously, you all have built those dollars into your budgets, and you're acting on those at this point. And so the decision to raid LGA, at this point, the short-term solution has really deep ramifications for many of the, as it was. And so, you know, we're in a lot of conversations right now to try and make sure that those things don't happen. But I think that'll be something that we're communicating out frequently as, as things go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Scott, on, since January tenth, we had a coalition meeting and regarding the LGA, Bradley, I asked about that potential loss of LGA. And Bradley said most of the cities he's been talking to have been budgeting for a five to ten percent loss.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would assume, you know, four point seven billion dollar budget deficit, that that's what we truly see in November. Every budget area has to assume budget cuts can happen. And so I would say, you know, the five to ten percent cut in LGA is, is probably a smarter planning tool to be thinking on. But again, we'll do whatever we can to make sure that doesn't happen.
Any other questions or comments, anyone? Thank you, Scott.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Next will be agenda item notice requirements. Our city attorney, I'm not sure who put this.
Alyssa.
This week.
Alyssa, please.
Thank you. Thanks, John, if you could just put this up here. Thanks. So, President and Council, I wanted to talk to you tonight a little bit about the agenda item notice requirements to talk a little bit about what actually is in the law, what's not in the law, and then to talk a little bit about what you might want to have as the requirements for Little Falls. Because right now, there is no set procedure in the Little Falls, in the specific laws or bylaws of the council to control this. And so we're looking to the statute to go over it. So I thought I'd just go over it, and then we could have a little conversation because it sounds like there's probably some consternation about what the, what the notice requirements are. And certainly, it's up to all of you to decide what you want them to be. And so I'll start off by talking about regular meetings. So regular meetings, like I said, are governed by statute in some ways. Under Minnesota's open meeting laws, so thirteen D, we talk about general notice provisions for meetings. So basically, that means if you're having a regular meeting, and it's one that's a irregular place, that's been noticed at the beginning of the year, that you're regular daily time, you don't actually, under the statute, need to give any notice to add any type of agenda item, as long as it's not one of the examples of notice requirements at the bottom that has special requirements. So in that case, what we really look to is local procedures or charters to set the guidelines. And so Little Falls does have some guidelines on how their council will act, but it doesn't cover this particular piece of it. The next thing that we will look at then is Robert's Rules of Order. And under Robert's rules, the agenda is adopted at the meeting where it takes place. So it can be amended beforehand, before that adoption, by a majority vote. So the normal procedure that you go through at each meeting by looking at the agenda, making any amendments you need to, and then adopting it by a majority vote. And then after that adoption happens, you can adopt an amendment by a two-thirds vote. So in this case, these wonderful agendas that when he sends out to us, they're really just for informational. They have no binding ability until you, as the council, pass it and say, this is what we're actually going to look at tonight. Now, there are certain types of agenda items that are listed at the bottom of this handout that are governed by notice requirements and other statutes, ordinances, or charter provisions. And so those are the types of things that I think some of you are very familiar with, some are, you're not as familiar with because they just don't happen very often in any city. For instance, a vacation of certain streets. If they touch public waterways, have a very long sixty-day notice to the DNR commissioner. You're more used to dealing with the approval of local improvements to repay for those special assessments, the consideration of those proposed special assessments. Or, as we talked about at our last meeting, the, you know, use of ultra and taxation type of hearings, or the adoption of Minnesota. So that's, those are all things that can happen in regular meetings that require certain types of notice requirements. But generally speaking, if, for instance, tonight is a regular meeting, if before there was an adoption of the agenda, if a council member wanted to add a, any type of item to the agenda for tonight, they can do that as long as it was amended and adopted by a majority vote of the council. So that's sort of the regular meeting, how the regular meetings are set up right now, what the laws and rules are about that. Often, what we see happen is a little bit of confusion between regular meetings and then special meetings. So for special meetings, those are these meetings that we call for things that need to get done at a particular time or in a particular timeframe. So under the open meeting laws, those meetings have to be noticed by posting or mailing three days before the meeting. And in the case of special meetings, and special meetings and, or special meetings only, the notice has to contain the purpose of the meeting and whatever is discussed or decided at that meeting, so the agenda is limited to that specific noting purpose. And so any kind of topic that will be discussed or possibly acted upon should be included in that notice. Now, certainly on three days' notice, that agenda can be changed, updated, or added to that purpose statement as long as a new notice is posted or mailed through those cases. You still need to adopt an agenda, a majority vote, but you don't have that flexibility to add things kind of on the fly as you would in other meetings. Nor do you even have the ability to say, if something came up this morning and it had to be added to the agenda, it wouldn't be able to be added to a special meeting. But it certainly could be added to a regular meeting. And then emergency meetings, which we don't deal with all that frequently, thankfully, are like a special meeting, but they're to specifically handle a emergency situation that requires immediate council action. So basically, in that case, you have to make a notice or make a good faith effort to make notice of what you'll have, what will be included in that meeting. The notice still has to have the subject of it, but there's, you just have to make a good faith effort to get that notice out rather than having a hard create headline. Again, that's perhaps this is to stick with items directly related to the emergency. If other things do come up and need to be acted upon, the meeting minutes have to include a description of that, but that, that can take license and emergency meeting. So all of that said, I wanted to open it up to questions that you might have for me and then just see if there was any desire to make any changes of, or for you to request that we put together some possible changes or getting examples of how other cities work with their agenda outside of these rules. So the types of charter amendments or the types of more, more likely just rules that they follow in terms of.
Mr. President, I, go ahead. On agenda items, one thing I'd really like to see is where agenda items are put on, put out in notice where, at least we have a couple of weeks to take a look at and think about what we're, what we're going to do. And I know some things just aren't going to do that, like reveals, but there are things that, that we could postpone a vote on an agenda item, which I, which we could angel out of, of constituents within the city. So what would be the process for that? Would that just require a motion to postpone that vote until later? Or what would the process?
Mr. President, would you like me to respond to that?
Would you please?
Certainly. Mr. President, Councilmember Storey, under Robert's Rules of Order, yes, you could postpone that agenda item. You could, you could motion to postpone it and/or to, sometimes it's referred to as tabling the motion. But either one, I think the, I think the council president would recognize as being the same intent, which would be to postpone a vote on it until further need. Mr. President, I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but I.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't positive, so thank you. I would be interested in knowing how other cities handle putting things on the agenda. I know that we don't have any written, you know, guidelines or stuff with our charter, but I, myself would be interested in knowing how other cities handle it or what kind of things they look at and do that, so that we're following the correct things.
I would also like to see some generally set guidelines that, like the way that other cities do it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you for the information. Our Town 56345, I will report presentation, John.
Thank you, Council President. I have in our Zoom call tonight, members of the steering committee and then one late addition because I think she fits the, a stakeholder to what arose from the Our Town project in terms of these guiding principles, strategic principles that really came out of a widespread community engagement effort that, that was made. And I just want to confirm because there was some confusion on my part and mistakes on my part that everybody can see the screen that has the PowerPoint so far? Can get some head nods? All right, good, I'm sharing it the proper way. So, so what, the way this will work is we have seven different participants from that steering committee that are going to go through, including Ashley, who will, will lead us off and kind of give an introduction. They'll introduce themselves and the topic that they're, they'll be speaking on so that we can have a little bit of an introduction to, to what this is. If you also did receive the update that I sent out last Friday, kind of went into more depth about what the rest of this process is going to look like. For one, tonight, there is no agenda item formally acknowledging or recommending or approving any of these strategic principles. This is first, the first step here is just an introduction to kind of get you a sense of from, coming from steering committee members, what, what was discovered. And then at later meetings, we're going to, you'll, we'll work on drafting a resolution that might go into more depth in terms of confirming these or making sure that the council has their input and community has some input regarding this. Speaking, you know, this being something that I hope can, can be utilized for our community for a long time and not just a, a plan that, that sits on the shelf. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to Ashley and I will be running the slides for them.
Great, thanks, John. Okay, good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Ashley Biden. I'm excited to be here tonight and really kick off the six strategic priorities. So one important element is grasping this concept of what is the strategic framework? And so the strategic framework is a brief document that sets a broad vision and outlines the strategic direction along with what the future might unfold. And it's also a tool designed to help connect the big picture of strategic elements, such as your mission, vision, and values, to goals and initiatives, measures in a rapidly changing environment. So without further ado, here are the six priorities. The first is to support the next generation, protect our natural resources, reinforce the local economy, practice hospitality and welcome, build on our creative assets, and bolster health and wellness. John spoke to that, but these priorities really work on, from the three guiding principles, and they were created through robust input and discussion that occurred throughout the generation project. So each of these priorities will be presented by six great leaders in the community who are part of the steering committee or whose day-to-day work is directly connected to these areas. So we all hear from Molly and Mike, Kyle, Tony, Heidi, and Carmen, who will provide more insight with each. And please remember that these priorities are in no particular order and this list is meant to be fluid. And each priority is based on one another and they form collectively an interactive set of things which we know there are to be.
Molly.
Well, I wondered, oh, sorry, John.
No, yeah, I was just introducing you.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, so we have Molly Nelson and I can let her give herself a more introduction of who she is and what she will be speaking on.
Well, I'm Molly Nelson and I am going to be talking about the guiding principle that we value our children. So what we want to focus on is a future that invests in and values our children, making our community a place that is really a high-quality place to raise children. And our vision with that is we envision a next generation community. If we are successful, we will support our children and youth with strong schools, providing more amenities such as a community center and healthy choices for elder school time. Next, move on to our actions to support this vision and value and how we act to support of the next generation. So with that, we look at having strong schools, having more community facilities, and other amenities that provide healthy choices for youth, especially our teens. Support to our families with young children, affordable daycare, after-school programs, housing, and of course, promotion of health and wellness. With this value and our visions and our actions, we hope to create and have a community where everyone can build their dreams.
Thank you. All right, Mike.
Hello, my name is Mike Becker and I, professionally, I work for Morrison Soil and Water Conservation District right here in Little Falls. And so I'm speaking on our, the importance of natural resources for community. We value it in respect to our natural resources and we seek to protect the environment. We act to protect our natural resources. And we emphasize that we need, one, strive to preserve and protect our natural resources, especially our most important resource, the Mississippi River. Becoming known as a river city with a waterfront destination, working with the county, DNR, and Camp Ripley in advancing plans to protect all regional natural resources, combining, supporting bikes and trails and the region across roads and the Barrowley Minnesota Trail Network. We envision becoming known as a river city. If we are successful, we will be a city with waterfront, local foods, and artistic amenities that enable others to enjoy Little Falls as a destination. We will respect, value, and maintain our natural resources.
Thank you. Next up is Kyle.
Hello, my name is Kyle Bogart. My section is economic opportunities. And closely aligned with being a next-generation community and one rich with natural beauty, the community continually kept coming back to the importance of supporting their local economy as a critical guiding principle. The, we seek to be, we, we seek to be very intentional in wanting to support local businesses. Of course, this is challenged at the moment by the pandemic. This is an important moment to set the stage for properly having an economic reopen and revitalization. We need to do what we can to protect and support our local businesses to get them through this crisis. We'd much rather want to keep what we have versus trying to start over or replace, get, replace businesses that we lose. When we come out of the pandemic, we want to preserve and protect our strength and create new paths and foster economic growth. And as, as John has up on the slide here, we envision strong economic infrastructure as the guiding principle here. It was repeatedly used in our meetings, the term infrastructure. We envision a community that has in place strong incentives for new businesses, especially small entrepreneurial businesses as well as light manufacturing. This vision is to get intertwined with the other priorities that require support to our workforce. One of these on here is daycare. I know that came up quite a few times. And having appropriate daycare, I think this pandemic has highlighted the immense need of, of good daycare systems in our community. And if you want to go to the next slide, John, we act to reinforce the lo, the local economy. Some of the things highlighted throughout the listening process that we could build on as we seek to reinforce and build our local economy, there was a plethora of ideas that were spun out of small groups throughout this process. We would urge development of a strong task force and planning process around this implementation area as especially critical. Working closely with EDA, which likely should share this implementation area, review of regulations to support entrepreneurs, work with Small Business Development Center, training and retraining opportunities, ensuring that the array of supports are available to families to make relocation possible here, and communications and marketing such as inclusion and relocation guides. This pandemic has really highlighted several things. And one of them is that there are probably people looking in larger communities that are now able to work from home a lot easier, maybe go back to where they were from, maybe back to towns like Little Falls, or maybe looking for a town like Little Falls and make sure when those people are town shopping, if you will, that we are attracted to them. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, I think this is where Pastor Tony comes into place.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Tony at First United Church here in Little Falls. One of the intervening principles that I get to cover is how we practice hospitality and welcome. And interwoven among our guiding principles of strengthening our local, our local community as a next generation with a strong local economy. With the loud and clear theme and guiding principle that we must also be a welcoming, hospitable community, one where everyone has a sense of belonging regardless of their origins, primary language, or even how long they've been in Little Falls. One where everyone is respected regardless of age, race, cultural origin, religion, or status. A Little Falls where all feel equally at home and have a sense of belonging. Next slide, Joe. Our vision is that all people who come to Little Falls would experience an extravagant welcome and hospitality, so much so that they would want to put down roots and call Little Falls home. We have work to do, though, as many voices in our community listening process alluded to the fact that Little Falls does not currently thrive in this area. Many people said, and I quote, "We'd like to see things change for the better," unquote. So if we are indeed going to be a place where all people can enjoy and experience that small-town feel and charm that we know and love, we must share the warmth, presence, and openness to a diverse world in which we now reside, with the goal in mind that all people, not just those who look like us, talk like us, worship like us, or even live like us, but all people would be proud of a fall of falls home. Next slide, John. So how do we do this? Well, we must build on the efforts already underway in our community through various nonprofit organizations and other organizations that seek to bridge the gaps of understanding and welcome. We must invest in local efforts to support and lift up the voices of welcome through community messaging, education, and awareness campaigns. We must create spaces and invitations for open and diverse dialogue, discussion groups, or other avenues that allow for listening to the voices that are all too often ignored. We must not just talk about being an open and welcoming community, but we must also show up and actually be welcoming to our neighbors and those in and around our community. We must organize for positive change, and not just for the sake of change or doing something different, but because we know it was identified as an area that Little Falls can be better in, which is why we must urgently work to be recognized as a place where people desire and want to put down roots, so that Little Falls indeed is the beacon of light in rural Minnesota as an example of what welcoming community looks like. Friends, we all know what community feels like. We know how great it feels to be welcomed and open arms. So why not share that with our world?
Okay, thank you. Heidi. Okay, thank you. Heidi.
Hi, I'm Heidi Ju, and I'm here as an artist and arts advocate to talk about creativity in our community. We value creativity, culture, and the arts. We seek to be a community known for supporting arts and creativity as vital to establishing pride of place. We are seen as an artistic community with art and music organizations. Actually, I still did another slide.
Sorry.
We have art and music organizations, theater and dance groups, murals, and public art. The foundations of art love for the arts goes back generations, founded in the archives of our museums, historic houses, and film graphic history. Next slide. We envision a creative community. If we are successful, we will have greater support of entrepreneurs and locally-owned businesses to succeed. It will be natural for residents and visitors to shop local businesses, shop downtown, and participate in local cultural events. Our creative community leads us to a creative economy that is resilient and capable to respond to new concerns and wants, especially right now. Next slide. We act to become known as a vital, as a vital community with arts and creativity built on pride of place. The community recommends that we use creativity, culture, and arts as an important asset vital to appealing for establishing and evidence of place. We cultivate celebration, public art, performance, and visual arts to create community pride. We honor artists and creatives as essential to human expression. And we engage the arts as a positive vehicle through all communities, throughout the community, and can find and celebrate common ground, optimism, and excitement for a shared future. So some potential actions include developing a city arts commission to help make decisions about future arts activities or installations. We invest in events such as street fairs, portable stages, and other shared assets amongst the several arts and cultural organizations in town. And we share. We consider public art projects that range from functional ligracks to maybe aesthetic installations of murals and outdoor work. We host community-based conversations, projects, and work within a round of creative place thinking. Because integrating arts and creativity in these six strategies, actually, to be honest, as one who does this work, it seems easy to me, but it actually has such a huge impact when you really get these things such as youth engagement, support of creative entrepreneurs, creative approaches to highlight and reflect on the preservation of our natural resources, of course, use of creativity in the arts to celebrate our cultural diversity. And of course, because we always seem to do this best, we can celebrate our community, milestones, health, wellness, and other initiatives along the way.
Thank you. All right, this is Carmen's slide.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carmen Getzke. I work at Morrison County Public Health as a health educator. So the final guiding principle, again, not last, but intertwined in a circle of values and themes in support of one another, is that of a community that values healthy lifestyles. So I'll be talking in the next three slides about health and wellness and what was heard from the community members. The community spoke clearly about valuing their health and wellness in strengthening the healthiness of the rural community, focusing especially on the wellness as well as the strength of our medical care system. The community values opportunities for farmers' markets, local foods, healthy foods, bike trails, and other recreational amenities that we are so fortunate to have in the city of Little Falls. Next slide, please. As we envision a community with a strong economic infrastructure, we also envision a community that builds a healthy local system of small businesses and amenities that will encourage a next generation of residents that are healthy and a community that is known and draws visitors who highly value local health and wellness services and opportunities. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little now about what were some of the things that were highlighted throughout the different listening processes. The community was very focused on prevention, otherwise known as wellness. And what you see here is a short list of some of the items that were named most frequently by our community members. The first is educate, further support those initiatives that are reaching residents of all ages and demographic profiles with the importance of healthy lifestyles, healthy foods, and the connections between local foods, healthy food choices, and healthy lives. Strengthening the core assets that we already have, our local food system, our local agricultural community, the farmers' markets, our trail systems and recreational opportunities, the importance of bikes and trails. And lastly, strengthening access locally. The community sent messages that they don't want to have to travel thirty miles or one hundred miles outside of the community to access healthy local foods and amenities. Thank you.
Thank you. Just gonna leave this slide up for you and if the council or any other members have some questions regarding this. Again, this is the introduction to, to the strategic priorities. It is not the, the final approved, but this was a lot of the work that came out of the steering committee as well as our community engagement efforts that we had. A lot of this stuff happened prior to COVID, so the future-oriented tone of, of the work is, was certainly given at, at a time where there was a little more optimism regarding potential large-scale community projects and amenities. And we recognize that, that those things certainly are going to have a time, and hopefully it is very soon. But understandably, we need to focus on what our community needs in the, in the moment, in the current, in the current time. We had plans to deliver this presentation back in April in its original form, but it has since been, been modified. And I do want to give some credit, and they're not listed here, to some of the, our additional executive community members that worked very hard over, you know, usually meeting at least once a month to discuss what we were, where this project would go and the, and the grant awards. So, you know, to Kathy Hartle and Arlene Jones and Vicky Chukulas and Susie Prossappio, you, you all did a tremendous job in helping us out along with our facilitator Sharon. And, you know, it was a great project to be a part of. And as I said, at, at the close of the introduction, we don't want this to be something that sits on the shelf. So there's, there's some more documents, there's some more work that comes with this that will be coming out in, in further presentations to the council. We've recognized that this is a, a process that has taken a lot of time, and we're prepared to take the time that we need to get it to the point of which the council would accept and adopt this and, and make a, a sort of a promise or pledge through a resolution to adopt these strategic priorities and sort of engage and implement them in our decision-making process or your decision-making process for all sorts of future endeavors. And with that, I'll open it up for questions or comments.
Mr. President. I'd just like to thank everybody that was involved with this. After going through and reading that, I, I know the amount of time and effort and hours that you put into this. I found it very rewarding to read that and actually get a document here which gives us as a council a guideline based on a whole city's input. And I can really see where this is going to guide us on a, on a path to the future. A lot of the things that you said here, stuff that council has been, has been thinking about or proposing or looking at. But again, because of the COVID, we had to pull back on, on some of those things. But I, when I went through and read the original whole document that John sent on Friday, I was very, very impressed with the, with what you guys have done. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Frank Olschek here. I liked what Heidi was talking about getting an arts council, you know, to get public artwork out and stuff. It kind of frustrates me. There was a project I did three years ago, still sitting in a warehouse, trying to be put up somewhere. It took three years. If we have an arts council that knows the laws, knows what we can do with public art stuff, it'd be a whole lot better for future artists to get their stuff out there and get this going in the city that's heard it wanting to have that. And Carmen mentioned the trails. What that little trail has done just to go out to Liver Park is amazing. I've talked to a lot of people. We need to pursue this and keep it going. Get this whole trail system into the town, out of the town. It's going to help economically. It helps. I see more people. I even saw a liger today going down the trail where they feel comfortable to actually navigate without worrying about being hit by cars. And that was a good thing. And then John was saying not to put this on the shelf. We did studies like this in twelve years I've been on the council. We've addressed many of these issues over and over, many of the things that were presented, and we've had many plans. We get all excited and they sit on the shelf. We have to keep this one going and it's very important. That's all I have.
Mr. President. I'd like to thank everybody who worked, helped out with this. I was in and out quite a bit as a steering committee member. It opened up a lot of things to make people. If you look at those six things that you're looking at, a lot of those should get their blind. But same, for example, we cannot look at, say, a web account. We could work with the arts people to kind of design, you know, maybe a poetry that spray, an awesome thing that they put within it. So art people can help with that. Any of the, any of the techniques get fabricated. We could work with local businesses. And so a lot of these things get, and projects that we're looking at, the more we can incorporate these things, ideas, the easier, the cheaper, and the better we're going to, we're going to be. Because the biggest thing when you do something you want to utilize. If you don't, if it's not utilized, you're wasting a bunch of money and you're being blamed again. So I want to just, I just want to thank you for helping us to build such a good job.
Okay, what else? Thank you, everyone. It was awesome to be here and to present it to us tonight. We appreciate your time and your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
The next thing on our work session agenda is informational wastewater items, COVID-19 research participation. Who's going to speak about that? Mr. Kimmel?
Looks like he's. Looks like he will be.
Good evening. So yes, we are looking at continuing our relationship with U of M in regards to COVID. Testing, if you recall, I think it was three or four months ago, Matt, our wastewater superintendent, asked for permission to do some additional testing down at the waste plant. Basically, we got the sample, we sent it in, they tested, and it's a way for them to kind of track to see how COVID is spreading throughout the statements. Or we're not the only ones that are working with him on this program. They had an initial pilot program that we were a part of and now they're expanding it. And so we would like to continue with that, with that program. We found it useful and very interesting to gather that they have been collecting. And so they are looking at extending it, and we would just like to continue with that work for the staff time. It's really the only expense that we have incurred to collect samples. It's really not a whole lot of expense on our part, but it's definitely worth the information to gather that is associated with that.
And the construction observation report.
Yeah, as you can see, we've been busy down at the waste plant. I think this one's eight pages long. We've got a number of items in there that, that we've been working on. The oxidation ditch being one of the main ones that, as you see in the picture, that is now online. It's operational. There's still some things that we're working out with the manufacturers in terms of the equipment there. But otherwise, everything's moving along with that, that project nicely. They're starting to work on the digester, which is the next part, which is the interdiction seed. So when the oxidation ditch treats it, there's obviously sludge, solids that come out of that. That gets pumped into the digester here, and that's where it digests and it's broken down some more before it gets applied to the land. So we're working on those projects, and once those two items are completed and actual fully operational, it should be pretty well on its way in terms of being a, a product. So that's, that's coming along nicely.
Thank you. Any other items? If you could speak your messages.
Mr. President, I have two. One is concerns with the alley behind Fall Bar. On that area, I don't sure tonight, and there's a couple. One significant bad patch, and then another one not quite, not quite as bad. Didn't have a chance to talk to Greg today to see what the plan is for that. And then the other one is complaint on a business in the West Side Business Park. I'm being told that it's a business park. It was called a business, business park and not an industrial park. So that the noise requirements are different in a business park. I don't know if anybody has a history of the naming of that, but, and you don't have to address these now unless somebody has comments. Just something that I will be inquiring on. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to.
Frank, you muted.
Yeah, you're backwards, Frank.
You were, yeah. There you go.
Anyway, I did go to Wall Mills today on the request of some constituents worried about taking down all the trees and, you know, the bumper area which would allow more noise to come through. But Wall, Wall Mills got hold of me, Wayne, from there. He said they're going to leave a forty-foot section of trees, large metal saw, and so that should alleviate a lot of that. Plus then, the people who live in that area won't have to look at piles and piles of logs getting stacked up in that new location where they're taking the trees down. And as far as the noise and the dust pollution, I've been informing everybody around there after talking to Greg. And that's something we can't do anything about. That's all covered by the state of Minnesota as far as the noise pollution and dust pollution. So I told them they'd probably be better off getting ahold of the state on something like that because they didn't have to request somebody to come down and do an investigation and kind of take some sampling and stuff. But it's something as a city, I don't think we have anything as far as noise pollution in our ordinances dealing with industrial parks. So it's been kind of a hot topic out there. A lot of people have been calling me on it, and now they're calling you. I'm sure they're going to call Mr. Starlee next. But at least it looks like we're doing something. And I'd like to make a request that any of these people call up. Make sure you're returning calls. They feel like they call, they're not getting anything back. So we have to make sure as a city we do return calls and at least talk to them a lot.
No one else has anything? We'll adjourn our meeting at seven twenty-five, but they'll, we're going to meet at seven thirty. Thank you.